I'll call the county council meeting to order. The Honorable Kristy Cox will lead us in invocation and pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us for prosperity, freedom, and opportunity that's unmatched anywhere on this planet. Lord, I pray for the men and women who service in uniform, that you would protect them and their families as they serve and protect us. I pray that you would impart wisdom and guidance to those in elected capacities that service on the national and state levels, that you would have them to act in an honorable way and that they would make decisions that are in the best interest of our nation as a whole. Lord, I thank you for the folks that work for us on the county level. I pray for encouragement and strength to them as they do the work of the people. It's a very important job to those whom they serve. Lord, I pray for wisdom and guidance up here on the council. I pray that our decisions would be based in truth, fact, and that they would be just. And I pray all these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The oath of office, will Rosalind Harps, Hannah Davis, and Genevieve Polites please come forward? That makes it easy for you, Mike. Terances, I believe Andy is going to introduce Chuck Haynes.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. Tonight, I have the opportunity, and I will say it's an opportunity, to introduce to y'all Chuck Haynes, who's our Emergency Management Director. I know you know him and worked with him in the past, but tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize him for a credentialing that he has received through his professional association. Chuck, if you'll come up here, I just want to, first of all, let everybody see you. Let everybody know you got through the eclipse today without any problems.
We survived.
We did survive. The International Association of Emergency Managers has a credentialing program called Certified Emergency Manager, and this is a year-long credentialing process that is heavily academic in nature, but also draws upon a lot of what they have done in the past, real-world experience. I'm in one of those positions that I'm very blessed and that I get to learn so much from so many different people, Chuck being one of them. This county is now proud to announce that Chuck is a Certified Emergency Manager. He has to maintain that credentialing over the next five years, but he is, represents about 12 to 15 percent of his professional organization only carry this. So it is a very big honor, and I'm proud to recognize you in front of the council tonight and in front of the general public. Thank you, Chuck.
Chuck, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you for what you do. Thank you very much. Kathy Greer with the Executive Director of the York County Free Clinic. Kathy? We're on a roll. All right. How about Rodney Watts with Lancaster Fatherhood Project?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First, let me thank council chairman and the entire council for allowing us this opportunity to come before you tonight. I'd like to thank Councilman Roddy for inviting me to come out and speak. Just wanted to take time to tell you a little bit about our program called Lancaster Fatherhood Project. We're a branch from the Lancaster County area. We branched off into the York County area. We service Lancaster, Chester, Union, and York Counties. We recently opened an office in Rock Hill on October 21st of 2016. We are a nonprofit organization. Our main design is to help noncustodial parents, to reengage them into the lives of their children, whether it be through education level, employment level, through the child support system, and different things. I brought with me tonight some information. I don't want to talk and hold you long. I brought information that you can read, but what we wanted to do was just introduce ourselves to the county of York and let us, let you know that we are here to service the people of York County. All of our services are absolutely free. We just ask for a time and commitment to be able to reengage into your children's lives because statistics clearly state that children that are raised by two parents, whether in the home or not, will be more susceptible to have success in life. So that's all we're trying to do is be a bridge builder, a gap between the two parents, and we believe that communication is that key. What we're looking for from York County may be some resources of whatever you can offer us to be able to help, to be of assistance to all the people of York County. Like I said, I brought brochures of our program, and someone could pass them out to you.
You'll just leave them with Mr. Madden. He'll get them to us. Thank you, sir.
All right. And again, our office is in Rock Hill. We're at 1380 Ebenezer Road. Anytime anybody wants to come by and visit our facilities, Mr. Roddy was there to visit. He can tell you more about it, but our doors are always open. Again, we just want to be of assistance to the people of York County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, did anyone sign up for the public forum? All right. Consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none. Thank you. I also would like to mention that I am the acting chair tonight. The chairman, Mr. Dr. Blackwell, wanted people to know that the rezoning for the Wynwood subdivision of the property on Weatherwood was a part of the consent agenda tonight and that he will, it will be before the full council on a non-consent agenda at our next regular hearing, and he encourages everyone who has an opinion on that to please contact him and let him know. I also was handed a petition by citizens, and I will make sure that every council person has a copy of this petition regarding that rezoning before the end of the night. Public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing, consider amending and second reading of an ordinance ordering a referendum to determine whether the South Carolina Department of Revenue may issue temporary permits to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic liquors by the drink to bona fide nonprofit organizations and business establishments authorized to be licensed for consumption on-premises sales and to allow the sale of beer and wine at permitted off-premises locations without regard to the days or hours of sales and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone against? Is there anyone for? If you would please state your name and address.
Name is Chad Miller. Address 2056 Balmoral Drive, Rock Hill. I just want to bring you up to date a little bit. There was another opinion that came out since the last reading, on the first reading, by the Attorney General's Office that said that since everyone had voted for it, they would not rescind the license next June. However, we're caught up between a no and a yes, very similar to that, like what's happened with Piedmont over the last 11 years. My recommendation is we continue with it to put it on the ballot since we really do not have a definitive answer, and the only solution to it between now and June would be as if the legislators would turn around and delete the part of prior to 1993. If that were to be the case, then we would withdraw from the ballot, but I'd recommend we continue on with it. Any questions?
Okay. Anyone else for?
Move to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. We have a rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider second reading for case number 17-27, tax map 171000026. Request to rezone property from PD to RUD on South Carolina Highway 161 and Battleground Road in the Kings Mountain area. Do I have anyone against? Anyone for?
Timothy Gordon, 254 Battleground Road, Clover. Mr. Counsel, I'm the chief of Bethany San Diego Fire Department. We're, the organization just recently purchased this piece of property for the purpose of building a substation. Obviously, the purpose of the substation is to increase our response time in that area. Also, it will help us to reduce our ISO rating. Bethany is a whole is ISO 5, but areas outside of five miles, which this area, it's around 250 homes inside this station will protect, outside of that are considered unprotected. So outside of the response time, by building a substation here, we will make a dramatic reduction in homeowners' expenses to homes in that area as well. And I'm also, you know, obviously live on Battleground Road, and I'm for it as well. So, any questions for me?
Thank you. Anyone else for?
Move to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other motions?
Move to approve, second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Passes. Number three, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 17-06, tax map number 334000049 to rezone from AGC to ID, property located on Chester Highway in the McConnells community.
Mr. Chairman, I move to suspend the rules and entertain first reading prior to conducting public hearing on this agenda item.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'd just say this is unusual, but in this case, I happen to agree. I think I've heard from most of the people that are getting ready to speak at this public hearing at least once since the beginning of August, some more than once, so I think this is appropriate for this item.
I concur. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Do I have another motion? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Now I call it. No.
I move that we deny this rezoning request.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
Same as Chad, I've received several phone calls, and I know some of you may have left a voicemail at my home. I was in the process of booting, but I did get all of those voicemails. Some of you reached out to me on my cellphone, and I do apologize for not calling back. We're in the process of moving inside the city limit, so I do apologize, and I did speak with several of you guys and ladies last week to reconfirm and reassure my stance on this issue. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
I'll just echo what's been said. I've spoken to several of you, been out to your home and met with you and stuff, and heard you. I did speak with the representative of the business owner today as well.
Anyone else? All those in favor of defeating the rezoning?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. It is defeated. I realize, thank y'all, I realize there's a large cut here. Rather than have you all during our next vote, just stand up and leave if you want to do that right now. We'll pause for a second to let you flow out of the room.
You are welcome to stay.
Well.
They're cutting down on other people's time.
I'll call you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Just say that there's no need for a public hearing.
Okay, I will.
I even had the mayor's brother call. I've had everybody.
Well, apparently the old number was, how many people? They were calling the old number, so I didn't get, I thought I got everybody in York County.
All right. Based on that vote, there is no longer a need for a public hearing. Action, public hearing number four, rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider second reading, case number 17-17, tax map number 494000108P to rezone from AGC to RUD, property located at 585 South Parham Road in York County. Do I have anyone against? Do I have anyone for?
John Schiff.
Please come on up. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Schifflett. I am actually John Mark Schifflett. My father, John Schifflett, is caught in traffic. They were coming back from the eclipse. They were visiting family in Anderson. This is, this is actually my property, but we have split it off so that my parents can build a house on the property as well. That's the purpose of the rezoning request, and we are here in for it, in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Any questions on the matter?
You're good. Anyone else for? Any motions?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Any other motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Number five, counsel to consider second reading of an ordinance and hold a public hearing to amend the code of York County, South Carolina, Chapter 155, zoning code, sections 155.009, definitions 155.010, permitted uses and special exceptions, 155.021, agricultural conservation district, permitted uses subsection L, 155.022, agricultural conservation district, special exception subsection B, 155.046, rural development district, permitted uses subsection M, 155.047, rural development district, special exception subsection B, 155.126, business development one district, permitted uses 155.146, business development three district, permitted uses 155.161, industrial development district, permitted uses subsections G and N, 155.176, light industrial development district, permitted uses 155.191, urban development district, permitted uses. In order to add a definition for commercial outdoor recreation, to amend the permitted uses and special exceptions in the AGC and RUD zoning districts by changing outdoor recreation, commercial uses, from a permitted use to a special exception in the AGC and RUD zoning districts, and to require applicants to provide proof of or application for a dehec permit when applicable, to add commercial outdoor recreation as a permitted use in the BD1, BD3, ID, LI, and UD zoning districts, to remove uses included in the definition of commercial recreation establishment in BD1, BD3, and UD that are now included in the definition of commercial outdoor recreation, to remove identified as outdoor recreation facilities in LI and ID that are now included in the definition of commercial outdoor recreation, to update the table of permitted uses and special exceptions, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is anyone against? Anyone for?
Move to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Six, counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, South Carolina, Chapter 31, entitled County Policies, Section 31.01, rates, fees, and charges for zoning appeals, applications for variances, rezoning requests, permits, inspections, plan reviews and other applications, procedures and services rendered by the York County Planning and Development Department and the York County Engineering Department, subsection A. In order to increase the permit building and code fees, increase the review and re-review stormwater environmental compliance fees, add fees for revisions to approved plans, secondary permutee coverage, NOI, flood zone determinations, and re-inspections for final stabilization, and a fee to rezoning subdivision preliminary plat and commercial site plan applications for reviews of tract impact analysis, and a fee for issuance of a power authorization letter, and a fee for a hydrant flow test to establish an effective date of November 1, 2017, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is anyone against? Would anyone like to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Any other motions?
To approve.
I'll second for discussion.
And discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
I'd like to ask staff, did we meet with anyone or the development community to discuss these increases in fees, kind of get some feedback from them?
Actively, one of the intent is, one of the reasons we asked for November 1, 2017 start date is to get a lot of those ducks in a row, to kind of notify the development community that these things are coming, to allow staff to change forms, our software on the computers, et cetera. So as such, that will be a discussion that will be had.
Because I know one thing I've been in conversation with, not about this particular issue with the county, but just in general with developers throughout the area, one thing that I've been hearing a lot of is, if we're going to increase fees, is that going to mean better service of getting out and doing inspections and taking care of some of the things that they've been having issues with, lag time on inspections or getting things approved? So that was why I wanted to know if they've been informed to kind of see what's coming in, to kind of weigh in and say, so we can kind of balance things out, if they have any questions about the fees, or if we have any questions or comments for them, that was the purpose of it. So as long as, are we, should we not have met with them before we put this on?
Mr. Roddy, yes, sir. I understand that concern. When council passed the budget this year, they added a staff member in planning and development with the understanding that there will probably be increase in permit fees either through the growth and development in the area, or if we needed to increase in some areas to be more competitive with surrounding areas of this county. So I don't think, I can't speak for planning staff, that they've had direct conversation or any called meetings, but I think that the understanding is that this is coming, just anecdotally.
Anyone else? Mr. Williams.
I think it was a little more than anecdotally. I remember the council saying that we wanted to see that some of the fees pay for the services that they pay for themselves and that we directed the staff, and staff, one of the staff's questions was even, we put this forward, are y'all going to pass it? So, I mean, they, so it was something that we talked about in budget, and one of our goals of making fees pay for the services that are required to provide them.
To Mr. Roddy's point, though, no, we have not had a formal meeting to say, hey, this is what they're going to be. No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none?
No.
Oh, sorry. Let the record reflect. Old Business, request counsel to approve the Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for fiscal year 2017 marketing grant funding.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all market grant applications with the exception of the Come See Me Festival, Fort Mill Community Playhouse, Lake Wylie Visitor Center and Promotions, and the Greater York Chamber Summer Fest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just make the comment that we have stated up here before, I think, and I know the committee has stated several times, that we want to try to not just be a funding source for certain committee or events that go on over and over, want them to become more freestanding and be able to use these funds possibly to help new events and stuff get started. So I will be supporting them for their reasons.
Are you proposing that we not fund them at any level?
I'm suggesting that we not fund those four.
No, it was Come See Me.
Come See Me, Fort Mill Community Playhouse, Greater York Chamber Summer Fest, and the Lake Wylie Visitor Center and Promotions.
Didn't we just, a question for staff, didn't we just add some funding, or didn't we go through a thing about approving funding for the Lake Wylie Chamber last year?
We deferred it a month, last month, last time we went.
Last year, last year we went through a thing with.
You are correct. Last year, we cut it some, but we funded them last year.
So we gave them, what was the funding last year?
About $50,000. It was a pretty substantial amount.
You gave them $50,000 last year, and this year, that was cut to 30, I think, $35,000.
So they asked for reduced funding this year, and we're deciding not to.
No, they asked for the same thing, but it was reduced to $35,000.
By the H tax.
By the H tax. So now we're deciding not to give them anything.
That's what this motion does correct.
Is this motion? Anyone else? I'm going to chime in. I think that when we look, when we talk about these grants and using hospitality tax dollars for marketing grants, the goal is to grow hospitality tax through marketing. When an organization's been having an event for five, 10, 15, 20 years, that is an established event. This money, in my opinion, would be better spent on other things to create a new event. We sent this council, what, two or three years ago, publicly stated, we're going to start turning off this spigot to events that have been going on for years and years and years. And for example, the Fort Mill, town of Fort Mill, heard that and didn't ask for money this year for Strawberry Festival. They said, we're up and running. We don't need that money for Strawberry Festival. This is simply a, kind of a fulfillment of the promise that this council began to make two to three years ago. And certainly, there is some question on, you know, if you fund one chamber, should you not fund them all? And we are not funding all the chambers, and rather than become a, rather than us all begin to have to start answering that question while we're not, this is, again, the fulfillment of that promise we made two or three years ago. Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy?
Would it have been better to set a date to say, whether it was this year, next year, that we'll only allow funding for particular events to last five years, six years? And after that, if it's an established event, people are asking for money with a predetermined set date that after five years, you can't get any more hospitality tax money versus this year just arbitrarily saying, we're cutting you off now, versus some type of phase out? Because I know when I first got on council, we phased out nonprofit organizations from getting county money on a percentage phase out, or we set a date that at this particular date, we would not be funding these organizations. So it was like a weaning the baby off the bottle type deal versus just cutting dry, this year, we're not going to do anything for you.
I don't think we're weaning the baby off the bottle. I think we're waiting the preteen off the bottle at this point with most of these organizations. But I hear what you are saying, I do. Mr. Winkler?
And I just want to make the comment, I know I am a past chair of Summer Fest, and Summer Fest has been an important event for York for a long time, and I will probably hear about this from the city of York and from the Chamber, who I'm a member of, but I have had issues in the past with funding Lake Wylie's Chamber when we didn't fund York's Chamber. You know, we're not just singling out one of these entities, we're saying everybody's getting put on the same playing field, and so I'll support it for their reasons.
And one of the things, too, I know I'm going to hear from the Lake Wylie Chamber, I'm surprised I haven't gotten a text, but, you know, it's not that we don't support these events. We certainly support all of these events. There's some great, there's some great things. And the Lake Wylie, you know, we do struggle with, we are, we don't, we're not a municipality, and we do struggle with, you know, getting the word out and having events and things like that. But just based on what I have seen and heard that's coming from the Hospitality Committee and some new things that council will be looking at, there's some, there's some better things coming, specifically for Lake Wylie, but there's some better things coming countywide. So I think we just, this is a step in the right direction. It's not something that everybody wants to hear tonight, but I do think overall, it's definitely a positive step in the right direction.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? New Business, counsel to consider adopting a resolution consenting to an assignment of interests under a fee agreement with York County, South Carolina, by Lex Rock Hill LP to 3D Fields LLC and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Two, counsel to consider first reading by title only of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a First Amendment to the Fee-in-Lie of Tax and Incentive Agreement between York County, South Carolina, the county, and a company identified for the time being as Project Delta slash Ivory, to provide for a certain especial source credits in connection with additional investment in certain manufacturing and related facilities in the county, and second, other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Three, counsel to consider accepting the Fee-in-Lie agreement termination requests received from Physicians Choice Laboratory Services LLC, Riverwalk Holdings of South Carolina LLC, and Riverwalk PCLS Building LLC with regard to the fee agreement entered on December 17, 2012, formally terminating the fee, noting, notifying South Carolina DOR of the agreement's termination, and authorize staff to take such further related action as necessary to close out the fee agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
How does this help, how does this help York County? I see Davis here, Swenson.
Mr. Swenson.
What's the, what's the big advantage to us to terminate this agreement?
At this time, the organizations that provided the request did so because the primary tenant of the building has filed.
of the building has filed bankruptcy and is no longer in business. So, from our standpoint, we're just going through the formality of closing out the fee agreement. The property's already been sold to another end user, that is not going to hit the same amount of jobs and investment, thus that fee cannot continue, and we're moving on with a new corporate citizen in York County. Different scale, but new corporate citizen. Hope that answered your question.
Any other questions for Mr. Swenson? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Number four, council to consider adoption of an inducement resolution to state the commitment of York County to enter into a fee agreement with a company known for the time being as Project Lemonade, to provide the general terms of the fee agreement to identify the project for purposes of the Fee in Lieu of Tax Simplification Act, to state the commitment of York County to place project property in a multi-county park, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Number five, council to consider first reading authorizing the execution and delivery of a Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement by and between a company known for the time being as Project B five in York County, South Carolina, whereby York County will enter into a Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement with the company, and providing for payment by the company of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park, and others matters related thereto.
And Mr. Johnson, I passed my note to clerk, and let the record show that I'm recusing myself from this vote, because B five is my wife's employer.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Mr. Winkler, you may return. Number six, we have a rezoning action. Consider first reading case number seventeen dash twenty-three, tax map number four zero five zero 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 eight P, to rezone from AGC to RUD one, property located at four twenty-four Dave's Road in the York community.
Mr. Chairman, that applicant has requested deferral of this. I have no problem with it, understand that second reading, I mean, that when we defer this to the next meeting, that it will continue to be first reading, no public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the deferral say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. It is deferred to the next meeting. Council to consider authorizing the expenditure of up to thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars in York County Forever Commission Funds to Nation Ford Land Trust for stewardship, appraisal, and administrative fees for the placement of a conservation easement on approximately two hundred and forty-eight acres located on Brattonville and Ferndale Roads in the McConnells community owned by Pat Williamson.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Number eight, council to consider creation of commercial tax assessor job description.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Committee reports, finance operations, that's me. Finance Operations Committee met tonight at five o'clock this afternoon. We took applications and approved Nicholas Ober for the Riverview Fire Tax Board, Jewel Rogers for the Bethesda Fire Tax Board, we deferred all decisions on the Newport Fire Tax Board, we approved Ed Lindsey for the Lake Wylie Parks and Recreation District, Craig Lutz for District Seven for the York County Cultural and Heritage Commission, and Carolyn Mendenhall and Richard Chacon as ex-officio members of the York County Cultural and Heritage Commission. Lastly, Alton Johnson for the Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board. We reviewed the Rock Hill York County Airport Commission Building Board of Appeals and Zoning Board of Appeals for potential conflicts of interest and found no issues. We heard from Watts Huckabee, the former Hospitality Tax Board Chair, who presented us with the committee with a list of capital projects. I think each of you have been given a handout that we were given there, stating the three priorities that that group has now chosen. Lastly, we had a discussion regarding the disposal electronics, and the fact that that costs the county somewhere between a quarter of a million and three hundred thousand dollars a year to dispose of TVs, and that our vendor, we have an issue now going forward with our vendor, and that's, we're going to have to tackle that issue. And lastly, that the finance department was getting ready for an audit. Are there any new council member, new non-agenda comments?
Is that a comment?
That was a comment to myself.
Very loudly.
Now I'm in the right place, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll just say, I don't see him in here, but I said something to him earlier. Thank you to all of our, I do, we have some of our firefighters back there, but all of our men and women in uniform, and I mentioned Officer Rodenhauser, who's somewhere out there watching the crowd right now, had stopped to help a motorist recently, and his patrol car was ruined, and he was injured in that event while he was stopping to help a motorist on the side of the road. So, glad to see he's well and out there protecting us still, so.
Anyone?
If we were ever going to put somebody on a horse, he's the guy.
Yeah.
I have one other thing. The recycling centers that we have going on, I know that there were some questions about, especially a couple in my district, whether or not we continue to lease and making sure that we have a long-term plan for what, where we're citing these things. One of those issues had come up before, and I think there's an update that needs to be provided to the public generally about the timeline for the one in Fort Mill, and I think that needs to be made public, and not just to the folks who reached out. So, if we could put that on the next agenda and have some comment, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? I'm going to say one last thing. The, our semi-annual review of the county manager will be in September. I'm going to recommend to the chair that that be held at the final meeting in executive session, because that's, gives us a little more time. Just want to prepare everyone for that, and Karen, if you'll please coordinate that with Dr. Blackwell. Do we have any citizen concerns? I don't believe there's any need for executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn at the six thirty-six?
The move.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we are adjourned.